Hooray!
Hooray!
Bubba, Babu, Bia, Babu, Bia, Babu.
Show me your action! Show me your action! Are you hungry?
Yes!
Are you hungry?
Yes!
Show me your action! Are you thirsty?
Yes!
Are you thirsty?
Yes!
What do you want? Take it! Ah, take it! Mosquito! Mosquito! Catch it! Catch it! Catch it! Crush it! Crush it! Crush it! Throw it! Throw it! Throw it! In your mouth! In your mouth! Chew it! Chew it! Chew it! Swallow! Swallow! Vomit! Banana, banana! Oh, banana, banana! Oh, banana, banana! Wosi, wosi, wosi! Wosi, wosi, wosi! Kety, kety, kety! Kety, kety, kety! Junk, junk, junk! Junk, junk, junk! Junkie, junkie, junkie! Chicken, chicken, chicken! Chicken, chicken, chicken! You, 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 you! Ona dona de de fa!
Iya iya ho!
Ona dona de de fa!
Iya iya ho!
En de mu mu te, en de mu mu te! Mu 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 te! Ona dona de de fa!
Iya iya ho!
Ona dona de de fa!
Iya iya ho!
En de be be be, be be be! Be 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 be! Ona dona de de fa!
Iya iya ho!
Ona dona de de fa!
Iya iya ho!
En de we we te, en de we we te! We 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 te! Ona dona de de fa!
Iya iya ho!
En de mu mu te, en de mu mu te! Mu 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 mu! Yeah!
Welcome to Charles' Game Bar! The magic animal zoo and other Titi class! Today I meet the best of this!
It's like a horse! Different animal! Okay! Yes! Okay! Which animal can crush this horse? A what? An elephant! Shallow! A what? Or...
Crocodile!
Yes! A crocodile! Yes, okay?
Goodbye!
Okay, let's go! Let's move!
This is a crocodile! They have powerful bones! They can crush anybody! But they are excellent for them!
Hey, this horse has...
Yeah, this one is 74 years old.
Oh!
Yeah.
You! 74!
Yeah. And the other one, 80, say in 69 years. 69 years.
Okay, it's a totally male, definitely.
They are male only, only.
Okay.
They're male only, only. So it lives alone here. Yeah, it lives alone here. And it feeds on meat only. Meat only!
Meat only! Okay, eh, this is...
For two months.
Only once for two months?
Yes, and it hibernates.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And then during this time of summer, it sometimes feeds twice in a fortnight.
Oh.
Twice on it, yes. And the quantity is something like 20 to 25 kg.
So it's not expensive?
It's not expensive. Yeah.
Okay. Yo!
But when it's young, that really demands a lot, yeah.
This is a lion! The king of the jungle! They are all can be ate! Five mouths are way!
A lion. This is a lion!
A lion! A lion! A lion! He has a tongue! And a small ear! And a big, big... Yes! And a big... A lion! A lion! A lion! He has a tongue! And a small ear! And a big, big...
Come and see, hey! Come and see the mirror! Come and see the mirror! This side, this side, come here! Eh, 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 eh! Behind me! Behind me! Behind me! Behind me! Behind me! Behind me, friend! Behind me! Follow, follow! Friend!
Monkey! Monkey! This is a monkey! Quack, quack, quack! They have bananas!
Eh, 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 eh! Monkey, monkey! Say "chee!" Happy! Show me your action! Show me your action! Yes!
This is a baboon! The biggest tick! I don't know how to find that!
I play chess. What's going on, look at you! Behind me! Behind me! Let's go! Choco is great at this. It's greeny. Hey! Oh, green grass! Oh, it's so... Who's Choco is there? Oh! Hey!
Don't cry!
Too much in it! Yeah? Too much in this? Serious? So, so I just see like in... That's a... That owner is also... This is that dog. Okay, let's move!
I'm here!
Wait, wait, wait! You can take that! Wait! All six years old!
This is an ostrich! Did I just believe in that or...
After 6 years old.
Did you know that an ostrich can run at a speed of 45 miles per hour? They can lay eggs fast! That's as big as my age! Amazing, isn't it?
Thank you! These are called?
Peles!
These are called?
Peles!
Yes!
You can touch this.
Don't eat! We want you to feed that ostrich, okay? Let's go! Let's go and feed that ostrich! Let's go! Let's go! Let's feed! Let's feed it!
Don't throw it! Don't throw him! Don't throw him! You do it like this? Check, check.
You see?
Yes, it's not... Come! Go!
How is that? Okay! Let's move! Let's go! Feet! Feet! Ah! Let's go! Feet! Okay!
Ah, don't run away!
Go, Jitando! Let's go!
Ah, don't run away with!
Feet! Let's feed! You don't want! Let's go, Sanit!
Yes, this one! Touch this one! Touch it!
Hold it! Hold it! Hold it! Hold this! Okay, let's go! Ah, aha! Who else?
It's me!
Okay! Hold here!
It's me!
Hold here! Hold here! Come, come, come! Let's go! Let's go! Let's go! Let's go! Let's go! Let's go!
Lift it up!
Up, up! Okay, up, up, lift! Uh-huh! Ah! Did you enjoy it? This one! Are you want to make? This one!
How are you guys? Are you fine?
You know everyone to check my check. I want your mama to check my check on.
She just makes a birthday day. She's three years old, three years old. Today is Rosita's birthday day. Rosita's birthday day. It's three years old, three years old.
Today is his birthday day. He's five years old, five years old.
Okay, let's sing for them. Ah, wait. One, let's see.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, precious. Happy birthday to you. How old are you now? How old are you now? How old are you now, precious? How old are you now?
I'm three years old now.
We wish you many love. We wish you many love. We wish you many more, precious. We wish you many more. May the dear Lord bless you. May the dear Lord bless you. May the dear Lord bless you, precious. May the dear Lord bless you. You look like a monkey. You look like a monkey. You look like a monkey, precious. You look like a monkey. Yippee. Pule. Yippee. Pule. Yippee. Pule.
Okay. Want to sing for Cindy?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Cindy. Happy birthday to you. How old are you now? How old are you now? How old are you now, Cindy? How old are you now?
I'm five years old now. I'm five years old now.
We wish you many more. We wish you many more. We wish you many more, Cindy. We wish you many more. May the dear Lord bless you. May the dear Lord bless you. May the dear Lord bless you, Cindy. May the dear Lord bless you. You look like a monkey. You look like a monkey. You look like a monkey, Cindy. You look like a monkey. Yippee. Pule. Yippee. Pule. Yippee. Pule.
Okay. Okay.
Happy birthday, Rosie. Happy birthday, Rosie. Happy birthday to you, Rosie. Happy birthday to you. How old are you now? How old are you now? How old are you now, Rosie? How old are you now?
I'm three years old now. I'm three years old now. I'm three years old now.
We wish you many more. We wish you many more. We wish you many more, Rosie. We wish you many more. You look like a monkey. You look like a monkey. You look like a monkey, Rosie. You look like a monkey. Yippee. Pule. Yippee. Pule. Yippee. Pule.
Okay, let's sit down. Okay, who is your friend, Rosita? Uh-uh. Petra and who? Choose two. Petra and Shalo. Okay, Petra and Shalo. You can come. Stand here. Smile, face the camera, smile. Open your mouth, Rosita. How's the cake?
It's delicious.
Wow, clapeans for Rosita. Jamie and Tando. Okay, Jamie and Tando.
Jamie and Tando.
Tando? Cindy, open your mouth. How's the cake, Cindy? Yes, okay. Okay, thank you. Precious. Ah, 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 ah. Corruption. As soon as I want to have a little bite. Aren't you? You know your friends, isn't it? Okay, who are your friends?
Adele.
Adele? Adele, who is kidding? And who? Ah, 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 don't tell her, okay?
Tabi.
Tabi, come. Here, friend. Uh-huh, and you? Hey, Adele, hold it. Okay, how's the cake? Okay, thank you, clapeans. Let's clapeans for precious. Now, birthday dance. It's birthday pule now. Let's dance. Let's dance, yes, yes, yes. Hey, birthday dance, yes, yes. Yes, 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 birthday dance. Let's have a dance. Let's go.
Let's go.
Let's go. Yes.
Follow, follow, follow.
Goodbye, we are going now. Goodbye, we are going now. Eh, eh, we are go. 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 How are you today?
Fine.
How are you today?
Fine.
How are you today?
Ah.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Show me.
You.